Meeting order. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Tom Dick Jr.
Here.
Lisa Petrowski.
Here.
James Rolo.
Here.
Dominic Roberta.
Here.
Deborah Marto.
Here.
Deborah Freeman.
Here.
George Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Margaret Stevie.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. An executive session was held this evening at 5:45 to discuss personnel issues. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on April 10th, 2023?
I'll make the motion then.
Currie moved a second to approve the minutes. Comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Citizens comment. Peg Jagetich, number one on the list.
Well, I've been here for over five years now. Every year the same thing. When's my alley getting done? I wash my car, I drive it through my alley. It's mud, no sense in cleaning the car. Now the road, in order to keep my mouth shut, they would bring a truck full of gravel and gravel. Then the garbage truck comes, smashes it all back down. Two weeks later, mud again. So here I am again, when's my alley getting done? Now my, my, the gravel's this, my road's this high, my yard's here. So every time it rains, my yard becomes a swamp because the road's higher now than my, my yard. Something's gotta be done. You know, this is crazy. I've asked every year, every year, and they just keep bringing me more gravel. And that big garbage truck, which ain't supposed to be coming to my, to the alleys, I can't let wall care, is still coming. They back in, clear back to my garage, even though we take our garbage to the side so they don't have to come back that way. And then they pull out and back down to pick up the rest of the garbage in those other alleys. So I don't know what can be done, but this is gonna be ridiculous.
What's the name of that alley?
Wall care.
Peg Jagetich, no.
No, it should be taken.
Didn't you go to the side?
I'm sorry.
Both sides, yeah.
Yeah, both sides are a mess. Half of those sides are.
Do we have any agenda on that going? As to paving the alleys?
No, we haven't talked about any paving this year.
Can we look into that?
Sure.
Okay.
We do have a few alleys that need to be worked on, but it's, you know, it's a progress.
I could point together some process to get it back to council. Do you have any other saving areas you want to look at? I'll put together a process.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can do only a couple of them.
And I would say both sides of the alley. I know I've, I've had complaints from the Whiteheads about the holes and stuff in the alley on the other side.
Okay. In the outfit? No?
No, you don't want me going. I'll let Lance go.
No, Dean.
Yes, how are you?
What are we doing for you?
I'm here regarding, again, 340 and 342 Kenny Avenue. There was an issue where the chimney on the 350 Kenny Avenue side, or 42 side, collapsed on 350. So they sent a guy up to repair it. And we, we've talked to him, you know, because he had to get into the property through the back. And he said that our side, the chimney on our side, is worse than the chimney on the other side. And he said he didn't get authorization to do that, so he couldn't repair it. I had to write it down because I'm old, I don't remember. She's only nine months older than me.
You remember the alley, though, right?
We really haven't seen anything else done over there. I think the bank's going bare minimum, just to keep the council or happy, the borough happy. They did put some railings up at the bottom of the steps nobody goes up and down of anyway. Then my other problem is a new issue, and, and that's 339 Kenny Avenue, which is directly across the street from us. There, I have, I brought some photos too. There was tenants, tenants left, left the, the, the house. And they left the mattress, the trash, all kind of things on the front. We lived there a couple of weeks, finally Rome, who's 83 years old, and my neighbor put it out for trash. They left the doors wide open. Of course, Rome went in and he said there was food in the refrigerator, there's a freezer there with food in it. We already have, for the first time since we, and we've owned that house since 1968, first time we've ever had rats. And we've had rats. And that's, that's why, he said, there was food, cereal all over the floor, dog food. The place is filthy. So anyway, Betsy, thankfully, we let, we made a call to Betsy, and she delivered a letter of complaint to Mark McCarrison, who owns the house, who has a nice little house up on the terrace in Trafford. It's my understanding that he's gonna walk away from this house. It was his nephew who was living there, had four kids. Anyway.
Two dogs.
He, he, I contacted his daughter first of all, I had her, her phone number because she's the dog watch for us. And I just told her that, to let her dad know that the house was open and that there was trash all over the place. So the next day, he must have called, it's his nephew who rented from him. He must have called him and he came down the next day and cleared what trash was left out front. But he had a deep fryer that he dumped the grease in the grass in the front yard, I mean, pigs, I'm sorry. The thing that I wanna, wanna say, you know, Rome and I are older, we're not gonna be around that much longer, but you're trying to get businesses come into this town. It doesn't matter if you get businesses, if you allow people to leave their homes trash like that. And not, I mean, you have a code enforcement. He said he made 15 calls to the bank about, about the house next door to us without return calls. Don't you have other recourse that you can go after them if they don't return your calls? You know, and you can't let that go on, I'm telling you. Now, I think that's four or five houses we have on Kenny Avenue, which used to be one of the nicer streets. They're abandoned and empty and not being taken care of. Our alleys usually, that duplex has been empty for 20 years. They get on and they put new steps up, and then nothing. You know? I'm just concerned, Rome wants to put a double hung window in our bathroom because he's worried about that house catching on fire and us having an escape room. I mean, it's a worry.
Are you talking about that duplex?
Yeah, 340 and 342.
Mr. Brown's.
Pardon me?
Is that where Mr. Brown lived?
Yes, yes, they both passed away.
Right.
Both sides. And nephew just moved to Colorado and he said, take it, I don't want it. And the bank's not, not doing anything about it. We've tried to get people interested. I called my nephew about the house across the street because he does some flips and he said, I don't want to part of that. You know, I mean, it's filthy. And fencing. I mean, they have fencing. You wanna see the pictures that I have?
I'm interested.
I am.
Yeah, I am.
Please.
Right in front of the porch.
Nick, are you aware of the situation?
The yellow stuff is foam that he sprayed. Now, we walk out our door, this, this is what we see, and we get company. We were getting company from out of state, that's why Rome put the trash out. We didn't want people seeing that, it's embarrassing, you know?
Nick, do you have a status on this? What, what is your knowledge to this place?
And what address?
The 339.
340, 342?
This is 339.
No, 339.
340 and 343, correct?
Oh.
Nick, this is 339 and 343.
339.
Oh, 339 is the one, okay, yeah, second one.
Yeah, the second one.
Yeah, I used to live at 343. I'm still there, I can hear anyone.
340 and 342.
He said he had rats, one in his basement, so rather than repair the porch, he sprayed foam all over it. Rome went and shaved that down after they moved out because it's so unsightly, it's terrible looking. You know, the kids would run their bikes into the fence and it's all broken.
Okay, I'm gonna put you, I'm gonna put Nick on the spot and let him give us a status on this stuff. Thank you.
So, on April 24th, I called Mark McCarrison and I left a voicemail. I got the phone number from his son and I had, left a voicemail asking him to clean up the garbage. So I left to go to Florida the, the day after that. And I'm gonna guess that he cleaned up per se what was on the front porch while I was down there. Now, the, the door being open and everything else was news to me whenever I, whenever I came back. After that, I mean, I, whenever I came back, there was already a deadbolt and a lock on the front door. And 3, 340 and 342, the, she's right, I did call the, the bank probably about 15 times until they emailed me. And they emailed me the, the, asked me what the code violations of the property was. I emailed them back to her and they came back and they started repairing some of the violations that were on the, the house. Now, as of right now, there's no, there's no violations on the exterior of the property, 340 and 342. And there's only so much that you can do for a vacant property and the bank's gonna try to, hopefully try to sell it to somebody who's gonna maintain it properly. There, there might be some holes and stuff inside the foundation that I don't know about that she, she has seen, but I never got any kind of call about any kind of core, anything like that, that rodents would be going into.
I think she mentioned about the chimney not being stable, was that something that we could, because she's like, it's gonna fall on our house.
Well, I, I, again, I, I will go up there and take pictures of it tomorrow and I'll handle it as much as I can tomorrow. But whenever I looked at both chimneys, it looked like the back one that she's talking about had been repaired with the front one. But I could be mistaken.
He said he wasn't off for us to repair that one. Rome, our dead raccoon out of the basement, he's sucking the windows.
Oh, Rome, stay.
Yeah, stay out, that could be dangerous, yeah.
I know he's not going to, and that's why I'm saying that, I know he's not going to.
It's between the houses and it was dead, it was hanging out of a hole, you know? I mean, it's, we just, we've lived there too long and this has been a too nice a town. We raised our kids here. I mean, it doesn't matter how many good businesses.
Violations that we could do to that property?
I actually had condemned it. Whenever, at first, whenever the whole property had gone up and the chimney had fell on Mrs. Freeman's past rental unit, she, I, I actually had condemned the whole building. And I, whenever I condemned it, I, and I emailed the property owner at the time, the bank, about the condemnation and all the violations that were on there that had to be fixed. And as soon as, as soon as they found out about it, they went and got the construction workers to fix it. So, so again, if, I, I'll go back up there tomorrow, take pictures of 360 around the whole property and then send it back to the bank for any violations that may be there.
Have we cited them and brought them to the magistrate?
I have not. I have not because they, they fixed it, or they were complying with the, the emails I was sending them.
Nick, does the bank have to have a property manager on file with you whenever there's no tenant in the house?
So there, there's no tenant, so there's no, it's not being used as a rental right now. So I, I don't know if our ordinance would still comply with that, but Mike would know.
They have an individual that deals with that property?
Yes, they do, yes, they do. And I had their email. I had their email and they respond very fast to it, I mean, so that's right now.
Is that what, I mean, does the bank actually foreclose?
Yeah.
Okay, so they don't own it yet?
But somebody, somebody is replying to it. I can actually get the name of the bank right now.
Because they've known that we can't force them to do anything.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Okay.
The banks will back off on that, like, they'll file foreclosure, but then they won't follow through and then have to de-achieve in their names that they can.
Right, it still goes to property out in Colorado.
That's the problem.
If there's communication, that's half the battle because a lot of them don't even communicate, so.
Right.
Hey Nick, how about tomorrow, we set up a time, I have a couple of things going on in the morning and I'll go with you while we take a look at this.
Okay.
I'll give you a ring in the morning.
Okay.
I've heard from other residences on Kenny Avenue about the rodent problem. So I guess maybe we should.
Bait?
Bait, or just whatever we're allowed to do. Somebody across the street from, from Ms. Belcher has told me about the rodents, so what can we do for the rodent?
As, as, as far as I know, the borough cannot do anything about rodents in that close, like, homes. So, and the reason why is because if somebody has a cat or somebody has a dog and they're walking it or they let it out and the cat or the animal bites into it, they could die.
Doesn't the county do that?
What?
The rodent thing, is, don't you, don't you contact the county for rodents?
They have our men trained, but that's when we go in the cricks.
Yeah.
They, they will, they will put out bait for rabies, but not to kill rodents. If that makes sense.
Because it might hit people's pets. So we'll get together tomorrow.
Thank you, anything else, Colleen?
I think, I think that's, that's pretty much what I had written down here. I did mention the fences. You know, you can see on the pictures the fences, they're, they're just really unsightly. It's very embarrassing when we get company.
It is.
Yeah, it is, you know, and it's a shame.
And it's a shame that that's not the only street that's like that. We're in the process of tearing houses down once the bids and everything else come through. The money only goes so far and that's it, that's the problem.
Yeah, I, I really worry about safety. You know, our house is practically touching the duplex. If they catch us on fire, our house is gone. You know?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate both you ladies coming and expressing concerns tonight. Anybody else, sir, did you have anything?
No, sir, I did not.
Mayor Stevie?
The Pick Here and Police brought 211 complaints in the month of April. We collected $100 in, on mayor fines at the street tickets. Nothing from the state, nothing from the magistrate and what we do. Pick Here and Manager paid $921, the county $173, and nothing from the quality of life. I would like to ask council to approve a handicap space for Larry Lepsky at 544 Third Street. He has all the paperwork.
Clear by the chief?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Their motion on the floor to approve a request for handicap parking at 544 Third Street. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. Mayor, those 211 complaints, are they both civil and criminal?
Oh, they're, they're everything. The 211 are everything, from traffic, from. Traffic, neighbor dispute, child juvenile welfare.
Okay. Just wondering.
Memorial Day service is going to be after Monroeville service. I couldn't get a time today. I would say 11 o'clock. I put a letter to the fireplace for 10:30, but they'll come out at 9:30. It's when the ban gets done there. And I, I couldn't get a time for Monroeville for that. So we will have a memorial service on Monday, the 29th. Also, the chief's had a problem and he's gonna talk a little bit about dogs letting, being let loose and not being let loose and off-leash, as it is for our ordinance. I can't finish my important, thank you.
Mayor, ready?
Oh, George is pleased to see you back.
Oh, thank you. It was good to be there.
Personnel, General Dominic Roberta.
I have no business at this time, Mr. President.
Screech, Mr. Thoth.
Yes, I have.
Glad to see you in person.
Yes, no phone this time. Motion to amend our Cargill contract to extend the following deadline for deliveries to 12/31/23.
Second.
Currie moved a second into amend the Cargill contract to extend the deadline for deliveries to December 31st, 2023. And I believe that's the salt, right, Mike?
That is. That's, you know, we have to take delivery of 80% of what we order. Our salt bin is full, every other discount is pretty much in the same boat. So the Cargill has offered to basically just keep it as long as we have it ordered by the end of December.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Okay, the no name alley was paved between 3rd and 4th Street.
My church wants to extend gratitude for doing that. They are very, very pleased. Thank you, they wanted to say thank you. You know, Mike and I talked about this. They, the place, the residence that I had a complaint about, apparently to the pavers was not the worst. There's only one hatch peg up near the church, but the residence on the lower end, it's still rough, but like Mike and.
They were, they were there and they were able to do it for us because that was the biggest, the biggest concern. That was everything that was crumbled up, and that's what Jim Condon asked them to do.
You know, coming down the, we, there's complaints, but like Mike said, that's all they were.
They did what they were asked to do and we were lucky to actually have them there.
And like we just talked about, we really need to talk about alleys.
There's so many of them, that's a little. Okay, the water company's contract for a water line replacement on Wednesday, May 10th, on Cole, North and Revening Street. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Maybe the, the water breaks will, will happen.
Yeah.
This is still off of, this is from where we wall.
Yeah.
But they actually have kinda cut back there in Cole to water breaks, they haven't had.
Parks and Recreation, Deb Mormon, Freeman, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, the Mormon.
Motion to approve the Presbyterian Church Pick Here and Use of a Field on Saturday, August 12th, 2023 for pass, punt, and kick competition.
Second.
Currie moved a second to approve the Presbyterian Church of Pick Here and Use of the Field on a, on Saturday, August the 12th, 2023 for punt, pass, and kick competition. Question?
That doesn't interfere with the football team using the field?
No, no, they're not practicing on Saturday.
Oh, they're not, I thought they were using it for Saturday.
No, not, when they start their games, they're gonna have four home games, but their practice is Monday to Friday.
Is August not football season?
They're gonna start practicing on this day, or, oh, after the, after the fireworks here.
Oh, okay, okay, perfect.
Okay, and a motion to approve the.
All in. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Motion to approve the purchase of three to five new picnic tables for a sugar camp.
Currie moved a second to approve the purchase of three to five new picnic tables for a sugar camp. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Any help?
That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Health and Welfare, Ms. Marto.
Finance and Economic.
I'm sorry. I could try and get her out of the way. Finance and Economic Development, Lisa.
Thank you.
I'm hurrying to get, rushing to get out of here.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Currie moved a second to pay the bills. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
With recap of the Pick Here and Night Market, we had, I believe, 23 vendors in, in total and that includes nonprofits as well as paid vendors. I think the vendors did really well. We definitely had a smaller crowd than we have in the past, so if anybody has suggestions on how we can increase that, I'd be more than happy to take them. But overall, I think the vendors were happy. They, they actually did decently for the crowd that we had, so that's good. I did not attend the Broadway Street Escape meeting, so I don't know if you can help me out with that one?
Yeah, I can give a recap. The Allegheny Together that have, that have kinda been working on trying to come up with a plan for Broadway, I think they, pretty much it was the final, final design, they, they're kinda doing it in phases. Phase one would be basically the 600 block down to, down to Highland. And then phase two would be the, the 500 block and then phase three would be further down because the problem, they wanna do both sides and the problem is we, they're not sure who owns the property, part of it's in Monroeville. They toned down the plan a little bit because their original plan was it's buried all the utility lines, it's just, it was just way too much. So, but the things they've come up with, they're gonna email us the, the plans. When they do, we'll send them out there, everybody. The phase one, the way they wanna do it, it's, I think it's pretty nice. Pretty good little parklet over by Foxes and that little triangle piece, cleaning that up, adding, they took away the tall trees and just pretty much shrubbery around some bump outs to slow traffic down. One of the other ideas was painting the entire intersection. They said that tends to slow traffic down more. So whenever we get the, the final plan, we'll email about it.
We are in our final year with them, though, correct?
Yes.
So like, these three phases have to be done before December 31st?
Well, no, I mean, they, they have the plan. It would be, it would be implementing everything in the three different phases, like do this first section.
So they may not be holding our hand while we implement these phases, okay.
Right. Most likely, if you would like what they have, we're gonna pass it on.
Pass it on, Dawn, say, hey Dawn, figure out how we can do this.
They have any plans for the empty lots between the buildings?
They, it would be more or less if we can get, attract a couple more businesses and then the businesses do with what they want with those lots. I know the gentleman that's doing this corner, he's gonna try to buy this one right across the street, 600, who's already in the process of getting Rose Transportation. And if they do, he said he would like to use those for port guards and people to track a, a small resident. They're putting it first floor.
You like that idea?
Great idea. There is something that's not on here that I wanted to bring up. I had a conversation with Sally DeRubi, DeRubino, our tax collector, I apologize. Okay, I'm saying it wrong again, DeRubio. Okay, sorry, Sad, we'll re-watch this later. She, I was talking to her about storage of the old tax documents and she had mentioned to me that she would love to have like some kind of a, maybe like, let's have a shredding service go up there. She has 20 years of tax documents stored in her house.
Her, her and I talked and I gave her the information to the Westmore County, Westmore County Line Association. Because they did, when we moved from, from 6th Street down to here, we had a ton of records that needed shredding. And they do it at a very, very reasonable price.
Will they come to her?
They, they will come and pick things up, take them to their place, shred them, and then give her a certificate guaranteeing that everything's been shredded and destroyed.
Okay, and that's something we would cover.
For years on the court. I know in a lot of particular office probation and parole, they did that with a lot of your records and that was the line that they did up in Greensboro.
Yeah, what was the question?
We would cover the cost of all of that?
Yeah, that would be something that.
There was something else I was gonna say.
And I also talked to her about the head end building, even at the storage and everything. The old, the old building up on top of the hill that we have, the old cable equipment was in?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because we're gonna put some of our vendor records up there that we can't, we can't.
I don't know how long she's required to keep those records, but she said it's all computerized, so why would we have to keep paper documents that, I guess? Technology fails, I understand that. Also, what, what are we giving her right now as far, she had, didn't, I did not have this conversation with her, I'm just asking, what, what do we give her right now as far as like her electric or?
She is 25 a month to cover utility costs. And then anything else she needs, like she needs all of those, she just comes down and takes what she needs from our, from our storage.
Okay.
That's something that she requested a, a, a year ago or so, the $25 and.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine, I just, I didn't realize she was storing that much stuff in her house and I almost felt like we should pay her storage fee at this point.
Does she back stuff up on her computer and put it on a drive and give it to somebody or store it somewhere just in case?
I don't know if she stores it in the cloud, you have to, you have to ask her that, or she keeps the storage off site somewhere else.
And, yeah, okay, so that's stuff I wanna ask her because if that's something she's paying for also, I feel like she shouldn't be paying for that either. Some like off-site storage or something because, like, you know, we were just talking about fires. Should anything ever happen to her house, get flooded or she get, have a fire?
Well, that's why we talked about the, the building up on the hill. She's, she's gonna be able to store something up there. Car records she has at her house.
Exactly, and that's what I mean, like, should something ever, God forbid, happen to her house, I, I don't know, what, what would become of that? Or is there like, does she have to carry some kind of insurance for that? I have no idea how that works. So, just things to think about, that's all.
And bouncing off of Lisa's other question about how much we pay her, how long have we been issuing her $25 for electric? Does that be bumped up since?
Our rates haven't gone up.
That's, that's, that was the amount she requested and that's what, that's what.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Health and Welfare.
Not my turn.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I wanna say that Mr. Turner submitted his reports from the X-Maintain, X-Maintain.
Maintain X.
Maintain X, I always get that backwards. And the other thing is just. And the other thing, just a recap of the cleanup day. We had a total of five dumpsters, two were up on the hill, three were down over the hill. The two or three down here were filled, and up on the hill, one was full. At the same breath, I wanna thank the firemen for coming and helping out the older residents. There were a few.